Okay, we'll open the meeting up with Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence, please. Amen.
This meeting is being recorded for informational purposes only. All comments will be taken at the end of the meeting. If you have any questions or comments, raise your hand. You will be recognized by the chairman. Come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Multiple speakers will not be allowed. Thank you.
Take roll call Chairman Trustee Michael Hobus here. Vice Chairman Trustee Bob McBrady.
Here.
Trustee Michael Morelli.
Here.
Fiscal Officer Stacy Martin.
Here.
Under Administration, the Fiscal Officer's monthly financial report will be posted to the Township website. Please visit at www.bazetta twp.org. Under the tab titled Administration, Financial Page and Reports. Also, please visit and follow and share our Bazetta Township Ohio Facebook page for updates and community events. As a reminder, our Administration office is open Monday through Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. to serve our residents. We'd like to remind everyone, our Fire Department holds coffee with the crew every Tuesday morning from 8:30 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. Please stop by and see our professional firefighters. The trustees update on Trump County Auditor's fare deposit tax money. To date, we have incurred $14,851 in legal fees and numerous administrative hours looking into and responding to public records requests and other inquiries. Also, I'd like to remind our residents that our Police and Fire Department have a Senior Watch Program. If you're a senior, would like to participate or would like to refer someone to the program, contact the Police Department at 330-638-5503. We'll move into the First Resolution, 123-25. Resolution to accept the meeting minutes from the trustees' regular meeting on September 9th, 2025.
I'll make the motion.
I second the motion.
Take the vote, Trustee McBrady.
Yes.
Trustee Hobus, yes. Trustee Morelli.
Yes.
124-25. Resolution to authorize the Fiscal Office to pay all outstanding invoice and approve all warrants incurred from October 15th, 2025 through November 11th, 2025.
I make the motion.
I'll second it.
Take the vote, Trustee McBrady.
Yes.
Trustee Hobus, yes. Trustee Morelli.
Yes.
Okay, and we've been to the Fire Department. Chief Frank, give a report.
Yeah, thank you. I have 70 agenda items. I'd like to report, we had a slow month, thankfully. We had 76 calls last month. We need to break there, I guess. We did two public events, 40 hours of training, and 12 inspections. We did receive our firefighter's assisting grant. Phil Belli, I'd like to thank him, Captain Belli, he wrote that grant, and that's going to replace our expired turnout gear. So, thank you for that. And we went out and did all of our hydrant maintenance. We're a little behind on that, starting to paint it, so we're going to try to get out there soon and start getting this painted before where it's not every first thing is free. That's all I got.
Bob, you have anything for Chief Frank?
I do not, thank you, Chief.
Mike, anything for Chief Frank?
Nothing more, thank you very much.
Stacy.
I do not, thank you.
Okay, Chief, just pass that on to Phil. Appreciate him taking care of that grant for our taxpayers. 125-25. Resolution to accept the 2024 Assistance to Firefighters Grant in the amount of $47,610 for the purchase of PPE turnout gear, replacing outdated gear. The Fire Department will be responsible for $2,267.15 of this grant.
I'll make the motion.
I second the motion.
Take the vote, Trustee McBrady.
Yes.
Trustee Hobus, yes. Trustee Morelli.
Yes.
Okay, 126-25. Resolution to accept the software agreement between Bazetta Fire Department and Life Safety Inspection Vault LLC, known as LIV, for the storage and uploading of fire protection system reports. It's a free service for the Fire Department.
I make the motion.
I'll second it.
Take the vote, Trustee McBrady.
Yes.
Trustee Hobus, yes. Trustee Morelli.
Yes.
Chief, if you want to give the crowd a little dissertation on what that all tells?
Yeah, it's a reporting system that stores, so let's say, businesses, they get a sprinkler system tested, that when they test it and the company goes out and do the testing, they will upload their reports right into that system, so we have instant access to it. Instead of hard copies that gets lost in the mail and us have to scan it and we can go and read it's on there, everything's reported into that system. And they store, no charge to us, it's the companies that use the system have to pay to upload their files.
So it is free to the taxpayers and it reduces your time going out and about.
Yeah, every time they go out and test the system or they instantly, before they leave, will upload the report, we get notified that they work on the system and it's included.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. We want the Police Department, I got a report from Chief earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to report to the public, the Police Department's participating in the National DEA Drug Takeback on Saturday, the 25th of this month, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the police station. Bring down your expired pills or medications to be disposed of properly, and if you can't make it then, we have a drop box available or the lobby during normal business hour of Monday through Friday. And then just an agenda item, Mr. Chairman, that's it.
Okay, and then no liquids or syringes or...
Correct.
Pills only, no liquids or syringes. Bob, you have anything for Chief earlier?
I do not, thank you, Chief.
Mike?
Anything for Chief earlier?
I do not, thank you, Chief.
Stacy?
I do not.
Okay, and we move on to 127-25. Resolution to accept the invoice 98-5556 from Sundance Systems in the amount of $9,900 for the yearly renewal of Sundance Systems RMS Records Management System, which covers all computers, MDTs, and records, to be paid from account 2081-210-360-0000.
I'll make the motion.
I second the motion.
Take the vote, Trustee McBrady.
Yes.
Trustee Hobus, yes. Trustee Morelli.
Yes.
Move on to the Road Department, Superintendent Arnold, give a report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We got all the TBR done, Timber Creek, you know, Kevlar song, and I was happy to see that done, make the roads a little bit smoother down there in rough spots. They got my Clarion Jacobi crowned and repaved. They focused on getting the road done. I talked to the county today about a couple driveways. He was going to reach out to RT Arnold to make sure what they were going to do to touch up a couple of the approaches that need a little, a little more attention to them and to do the burping. Now, they will be painting the lines roughly October 20th, providing the weather stays nice because it's a temperature for that thermal paint. We got some stumps ground out over at the park. Thanks to the Park Board member Mary for reaching out and getting somebody to donate their time and equipment to dig them stumps out. We clean them up and collect them, so we'll fill them in in the spring. Now, the guys got the foundations marked up in the cemetery to start digging foundations for headstones for the fall. We have 700 tons of salt to haul this fall before winter hits. And Trustee McBrady and myself went over to Perkins Jones Road, met with Amazon and the contractors over there. They're anticipating that road to be completely paved and reopened by October 31st, November 6th, somewhere in that area. So that road will be back to public use. Playground's been completed. It's open to the public. It's going to be used just as much, if not more now than the playground versus the wooden playground. People should be happy with it now that they actually can see it and use it, so. That's all I got, so.
Quite a bit. Yeah. Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it.
Mike, are they done striping the Clarion Jacobi?
No, that was a temporary striping.
Oh, okay.
But don't do that thermal paint.
Okay.
They're anticipating October 20th, because as long as they...
Yeah, I know there's a fog line, less than on, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, they just got to set it like that for now.
Right, yeah.
It'll pass, it'll pass.
Well, the road looks good, so I don't, the rest of it's like it's a little smoother. Thank you.
Stacy, anything for Superintendent Arnold?
Anything.
Okay, and we move on to Planning Director, Zoning Inspector and Code Enforcement Officer. Inspector Posey, your report?
Thank you, Chair, Mr. Chairman. For the month of September, we had nine garage sale permits totaling $90, four fence permits totaling $200, one dumpster permit for five, which, and four zoning permits, $1,047. A total of 18 permits totaling up to $1,342, and a year-to-date for $12,413. That's all I got.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Bobby, anything for Inspector Posey?
I do not, thank you, Mark.
Mike?
No, I do not, Mark, thank you.
And Stacy?
I do not.
Okay, and move on to Zoning Board of Commissioners and Zoning Board of Appeals. Deanna, do you have anything for us?
Um, I do not. We're looking forward to our next quarterly meeting.
Okay, we're going to move on to the Parks and Recreation Board. This time, we'll ask the Optimists Club to come on out and present us with our check from our fundraiser. Steve, you want to make a comment?
You coming up to accept us also? I'm the chairman of Park Board. You're the one charged.
Get right next to my...
Most of you know the Optimists Club did a first gun bingo to raise money for us, but also, we said that 25% of all the proceeds were going to the Park Board. Well, that totaled like 3,600, so we are presenting you with a check tonight for $4,000.
Appreciate you guys. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. You have time for a quick picture, Steve? Thanks, Steve. You're welcome. Okay, I'd like to thank John Van Meter and Steve Rock from the Bazetta Port of Optimists Club. It's a great partnership to have, and we'll make sure we use those funds very wisely. Trustee Morelli, you have anything else to report?
No, just, Mary, you had some items you might want to talk to the public about this. I'll refer to you.
Well, Mary, are you going to be using this money?
Huh?
Are you going to be using that check?
How are we going to use a check? Well, we haven't figured that one out yet, but we will. No, I want to thank them so much again. So, the Park Board is planning Christmas in Bazetta on November 29th. That's one of our, it's a 3B event for the public to come out and decorate the trees. We know the electric needs fixed, and I have a contractor, we'll explain what's going to be done on that night, we'll turn that over to him in a second. And then we're also, in January, we're doing a chili cook-off on January 11th, excuse me, 4 to 7 at the Country Porch Winery. So, I'm going to turn it over to Bob, who's in charge of doing the electrical work, so.
The existing wires broken multiple times from what we could determine with the tracer. What we're planning on doing is running a 526-foot strand from the breaker box meter base over to the sign where there is currently an outlet. The lights for the sign and the flag pole will be wired in with that, and then backfill, finish, licensed contractors volunteering his time. My business is going to assist him with getting the wires laid, all of that stuff. The Park Board said that they would get the, or the Road Department said they'd get a trench dug for us, so we're working with them as far as what their schedule is and everything like that, to get everything lined up. And then when it's said and done, my crew will make sure it's leveled off and reseeded, so the Park, the Road Department don't have to worry about more with everything coming down to winter time, having a busy schedule.
I do, Bob, is that wire going to be in conduit?
No, no. It's going to be, it needs to be 24 to 30 inches deep. And with the wire that's being used, it is underground, they don't recommend putting it in conduit, so.
Do we need to get a permit for that?
The electrician's going to take care of the permit. He's actually absorbing the cost of the permit for that, and the wire, the boxes that are needed, are going to be taken care of out of donations.
Okay, all right, thank you, Bob. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody. Yeah, you're aware that that's crossing their main power line?
Yes.
That will be around 30 something, close to 30 something inches below, so.
Right. Actually, they're saying it should be around 36 to 39 inches is where they're at, so that's why we're staying 30, and...
Can we get that line spotted? I think that's three-phase.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be marketed before we get any.
Will that be dug, yeah?
Right now, it's, we're pushing for the beginning of November's when we're actually going to be able to get it, so here in the next two weeks, we'll be getting things set up to get them out there to market, because once they market, we only have seven days to do what we need to do, or it's got to be redone, so I don't want to be wasting any time.
Who's marketing it, or?
What's it?
Who's marketing it?
The, call before you did, Drew's going to help out to do it, so.
Thank you.
Okay, Bob, if you could just get with the annex, we'll need cold fire, what's PWC, all that.
Right.
Show the check.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've spoken, and as soon as he gets back from vacation next week, we're going to get everything, and he'll be coming over to talk to, we'll meet with Deanna and get everything taken care of and on the books for you guys.
Excellent. Appreciate your help, as always, Bob.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay, and move on to Resolution 128-25. Resolution to approve the repair and replacement of the damaged electrical wiring at Bazetta Township Park. Motion?
We're not going to motion.
Yes.
I'll second it.
Take the vote, Trustee McBrady.
Yes.
Trustee Hobus, yes. Trustee Morelli.
Yes.
129-25. To approve to set Saturday, November 29th, 2025, at 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. as Christmas in Bazetta, at Bazetta Township Park, with a Christmas tree lighting.
Make the motion.
I second the motion.
Take the vote, Trustee McBrady.
Yes.
Trustee Hobus, yes. Trustee Morelli.
Yes.
Okay. 130-25. To approve to set Sunday, January 11th, 2026, for a chili cook-off fundraiser from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Country Porch Winery. A motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Take the vote, Trustee McBrady.
Yes.
Trustee Hobus, yes. Trustee Morelli.
Yes.
Okay, next, we'll move on to, no one was asked to be placed on the agenda. Move open to public comment. We'll accept public comment this time. If anyone has a question or comment, raise your hand. The chairman will recognize you, state your name and address for the record, and multiple speakers at the same time will not be allowed. Anyone for public comment? Sorry, John?
John Sobaw, 922...
Right here, John, come up for the lecture.
Can you come up there? Please do. John Sobaw, 922 Perkins Jones Road. I'm here representing most of the neighbors in Perkins Jones with the Penguin Project. And we'd like to know what are the updates as of now, and when is this, when does the building plan on being opened?
Well, we're hoping, actually, Friday, we're hoping to schedule Friday for a walkthrough with those guys to get an update.
At the building?
At the building.
Okay.
Yeah, Jeremy and Todd. Todd from Ambrose Property Group, and Jeremy with the general contractor there. So we'll be able to get an update, and we'll probably be putting something on Facebook and circulating through social media.
Okay. We've discussed this earlier out on the project. With all the extra traffic, how's the guard rail situation looking?
That's something that we're going to have to discuss with, with Amazon amongst the Board of Trustees and with the county engineer, because it's currently a counting road.
Okay.
It's something that we'll be discussing.
Because we're looking at almost 400 to 500 extra vehicles every day on that road, just with the Amazon, period. Plus the noise, plus the semis. I talked to the guy from Environmental Today, who coming from Cleveland, you know where he took him to come in here? The Amazon building? Bazetta Road. So, all those semis, they're ending up coming up Bazetta Road, trying to make the S-turn like they do for the last 20 years, and get stuck in those ditches.
Yeah, part of that meeting that hopefully will be scheduled Friday is going to be signage over there and where it's going to be placed.
Signage is going to matter. People go by GPSs.
Yeah.
And that thing's been wrong for 20 years. And just like I said, I talked to, his name was Gary today, coming in from Cleveland to oversee what was going on on the road, and it took him right up Bazetta Road. Had nothing to do with the large moniker.
Yeah, our problem that we're going to run into is if it still takes them up Bazetta Road and there's a guard rail, then what are we going to do?
He goes around the dead end in a cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's plain and simple, right there. I mean, you guys wanted this project, you can have your industrial end of Perkins Jones Road, give us the guard rail and leave our neighborhood alone. And there's hearsay about other businesses going in there also. And if I'm hearing it, and the neighborhood's talking about it, it's funny, because the county guy slipped on it the other day that I was talking to, so. Remember, you guys asked for this, we would like something in return.
Well, there's nothing we can stop it, John. There's no way you can stop an industrial road.
Oh, I understand. I understand not stopping it.
We can't stop it.
I understand it, but separate it. We don't want all that traffic over here, that's why we all moved there. And then, according to the paper, there was no more extra money from Amazon, a billion-dollar company, to help us tie in?
Yeah, well, when I sat down with Amazon and got them to pay the tap-in fee and the Health Department fee, that was about all they were willing to pay.
We got one house that's 400 feet away, it's going to cost you $40,000 to tie in. It's going to cost me $20,000.
You got an estimate for it?
No, it's by the county engineer, it's $100 a foot.
That's for the frontage.
Everything goes out the back, so you've got to go around back of the house and come back out front. It's 155 feet plus my septic thing. It's going to cost nearly $20,000. Did you guys back in February when all this come out, go and try and get grants from the county for us to do this? Or you guys didn't figure it was going to cost that much? Where do you want me, where do you want me to give $20,000? Or the neighbor $40,000? On a private project, that you guys saw money for, making money.
You're talking that the frontage, you're going, it's going to cost you, how much for a frontage?
Frontage has nothing to do with it, Bob. My septic tank comes out the back of my house.
Right.
Which means you've got to go around the house and come back up front. You're not getting that, are you?
To put the sewer line in?
Yes.
You, you got that from contractor that they're going to bring it in from the back instead of the front?
What, are you, are you going to dig under my house?
You have basement?
Yes.
Okay.
It goes out the back of the house, Bob. What don't you understand?
They can change that.
How are you going to change that? It's under the house, under the basement floor.
Under the basement floor.
Where's it going to go out? Where, where else is it going to go out?
Have you talked to contractor by that?
Not yet.
Okay, well, I think you should talk to contractor first and you'll find out. They're not going to take that from back of your house and run it around and try and tie into that front sewer.
How are you, how are you going to do it?
You have to talk to contractor, so.
How are you, how do you plan on doing that? You're not going to dig underneath my house.
Do you have a basement?
Yes. I got an eight-foot basement.
Okay.
Which means, at the grade that they come out, they're probably not going to make grave from my house to the sewer.
How deep's the sewer?
18 feet.
Okay.
And they came up 10 feet. There's a riser 10 feet in front of my house. So my, my basement's eight feet deep.
Eight feet, right, okay.
All right? And it's only 10 feet deep in my front yard.
I think it's just a little miscommunication, now, if they're not going to go out your back and go all the way around your house to come to the...
There's no other way to do it. What don't you understand? It comes out of the middle of the back of my house.
Why can't it come out through the front?
Who's going to dig up the basement?
Going to dig up the bas, I thought you, do you have a toilet in the basement?
Yes.
Okay.
So how are they going to do that?
You're going to tell them. I can't tell you.
Because I'll write you a check for the, for the BS you guys put in the paper in January, where it's going to cost $500.
To tie in.
Yeah, no, for the project. $500 to $1,500 would be the most.
Who said that?
It's right there.
Uh, where, where's the paper at? You guys said, it's in the paper, January's paper.
29th, January 29th.
Yeah. I didn't say it, you guys said it. Uh, costs of hooking into the sewer line can run anywhere from $500 to $1,500 by estimates. Hooking into the sewer line is entirely voluntary, which is not true also.
Who are they quoting now, Earl?
Really, you're going to blame him?
Yeah.
Are you going to blame him?
Well, I want to know who said it.
The gentleman that passed with.
Okay. Well, I can't speak for him, he's not here.
Well...
He can't speak for himself.
Well, that's what we want, somebody's got to help us with these costs. People just can't afford the 20, 30, $40,000 to tie in the sewer because you guys went to Amazon. You guys know how to get ahold of me, thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
John Bar Hoover, 2695, here, Craig, Ron. I just got a silly question. The, congratulations, kudos to the fixing the electrical at the Bazetta Park, I'm sure that's been heated for a long time. From my understanding, the park is kind of split down the middle of the, outside of the backside, or the outfield and the baseball field, and part of that property is Army Corps of Engineers property, correct? So, running that line, do you need any type of mutual aid, mutual agreement with the Army Corps of Engineers to run that line or anything, or is there going to be any hiccups with that whatsoever?
Not if the line had already existed beforehand, the problem is, it's just broken.
No, I, I get that 100%, and like I said, kudos getting that repaired at no cost, that's awesome.
It doesn't run across that property.
What's that?
The repair that they're projecting from, the repair that you're making is down the same stretch.
Right.
Property.
No, I was just curious about the...
That part is not on the Army Corps.
Oh, it's not? It doesn't run through it at all?
No.
Okay. I was just wondering, like, if you needed upgrades or anything for the park, do you have to get, like, is there any type of mutual aid agreement with the Army Corps of Engineers if you want to do anything with that property? Okay, I was just wondering, like, if you needed upgrades or anything for the park, do you have to get, like, is there any type of mutual aid agreement with the Army Corps of Engineers if you want to do anything with that property, do you have any type of mutual agreement with them?
We do.
Okay.
We have like the park lease that we just finally got last year.
Yeah.
That's fantastic.
A new lease, and of course, with a new lease, you're going to work your way through it, what is permitted, what's not permitted.
I understand, no, like I said, thank you, um, I was just being ignorant and I, I just kind of wanted the answer to that, fantastic.
Good question.
Kudos to you guys for getting that repaired at no cost, thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? No one for public comment? Okay, we are going to add a resolution to the agenda. One thirty-one dash two five, resolution to rescind, resolution one one nine dash two five, and that was the resolution declaring trick or treat on Thursday, October thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, from six to eight PM. A motion?
Make the motion.
I second the motion.
Take the vote, trustee McBride?
Yes.
Trustee Hovis? Yes. Trustee Merely?
Yes.
Also another one, one thirty-two dash two five, resolution to declare trick or treat on Friday, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, from six to eight PM.
I make the motion.
I'll second it.
Take the vote, trustee McBride?
Yes.
Trustee Hovis? Yes. Trustee Merely?
Yes.
Okay, one three three dash two five, resolution to adjourn the meeting at seven thirty-one PM.
Make the motion.
I second the motion.
Take the vote, trustee McBride?
Yes.
Trustee Hovis? Yes. Trustee Merely?
Yes.
Thank you for removing trick or treat, by the way, a lot of people were asking about that.
What's that?
I said, thanks for removing trick or treat, a whole lot of people are concerned about that because Friday, October thirty-third is Halloween and it's all right, so people are really excited about that.
We always coordinate that.